Everyone to the regular city council meeting for Monday, July 18. I will request the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy is absent. Councilmember Hill?
Present.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Present.
Councilmember Maria Dunne's Galati is absent. Mayor Kate?
Present. Three of us are present. We have a quorum. So welcome to our meeting. We are glad you're here. We're in our hybrid format, which means that we have people in the chambers that can give public comment, and we'll have virtual public comment. So thank you for tuning in. And thank you to all the staff who worked so hard every single day to keep our city and town running so smoothly. We are so grateful to you for your professionalism and your ability to get things done. So thank you. We're going to get to tonight's agenda, but I want to give a shout out first to the Business Improvement District, which have been organizing events Thursday and Friday night in downtown San Rafael. If you haven't made it out, you can dine under the lights on Thursday. There's a Friday block party, and it is fabulous. Great food, obviously, at our restaurants. There's great music. And you can learn all about the details and other upcoming events at www.downtownsanrafel.org. We have an upcoming bike criterion, the end of July. We have a second Friday art walk. There's a lot happening. We appreciate the partnership of San Rafael Chamber in all of this because we want to show up for our local businesses, and we do that by shopping local, dining local, and being downtown. So thank you for everyone who supports our local business, and I hope to see you all out there this Thursday. Should be beautiful, not too hot. So with that, I will turn it over to the city clerk to address how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. The meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and anyone who's unable to make it to the council chambers can still provide public comments by phone by calling 669-900-9128 and use the meeting ID 899-2635-9885, or they can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you're commenting over the phone, please press star nine when Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. And if you're commenting through Zoom, you can use the raise hand button to let us know you'd like to speak and wait until you've been unmuted. If you have any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofSanRafel.org. For those of you who are attending in person and wish to provide public comment, you can approach the podium once Mayor Kate opens the public comment period. And displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. For public comments not related to this evening's agenda, you can fill out a public comment card. Those are found on the lobby table, and they're also right here. And then you'd submit them to me. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in or if you're from outside of San Rafael. And lastly, we are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom, so you can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So it's open time for public expression. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to approach and give some public expression?
Good evening. My name is John Jonathan Freeman. I'm going to turn this off. So a couple weeks ago, I was here, and I really appreciated how good you guys are. You're thoughtful, a lot of good questions, especially you, Kate. A lot of impressions, big insightful things that you said there. I thought it was very intelligent and quite thorough. And I was able to tell all that even though I was down two accommodations for my hearing. Usually, there's a screen over there to which I can read lips, and there's something called audio everywhere, which was not working that night for me. And so I was having to lip read from far away and look at those captions over there. And it kind of made for tough sledding, and to the point where Rachel, you were speaking to me at some point, and I wanted to give you attention that you deserved, when I realized that when I was reading, I could tell you were talking to me. So then I decided to read your lips. And accommodating someone with a hearing loss takes a lot because hearing loss requires so many different accommodations. I do want to point out that masking makes it much more difficult. I can't read lips through mask. Even though Superman was Jewish and he had x-ray vision, I don't. So I only asked for one accommodation throughout the entire evening, just once, when I asked for what the fellow over there was talking about in terms of leaf blowers. So I just wanted to point that out, that it ought to be okay for people to be able to ask for something and be repeated if they have a hearing loss. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the chamber like to talk on anything not on tonight's agenda? Not seen anyone in the chamber? Is there anyone virtually?
Yes, just as a reminder, to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker does have two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. And I do see two hands.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Yes.
No.
This is Ava Chrysanti, and you know, I listened to the last San Rafael City Council meeting, and I did hear Mr. Freeman's comments and Reynolds Johnson's comments, or Johnson-Reynolds' comments. And I was pretty shocked to hear Lynn Murphy praised and to hear the San Rafael City Council praised in spite of the horrific abuses that are ongoing at the internment camp you're running under a freeway is very troubling. I have been there multiple times in the last month. I noticed that there is an elderly disabled black man who is all wrapped in blankets near the front. And when I asked the other internees, why is he wrapped in blankets near the front? They said that he had had a tent, but it had been taken, and the city would not replace the tent. I want to point out that Mr. Freeman, who has been praising you, has no idea of the CPRA correspondence I received after a year of multiple CPRAs to the city. Clearly, the city is not being frank with people like Mr. Freeman or the rest of their constituents about whatever is happening with the jurisdiction within that site or any of the human rights abuses that are ongoing there. And I will not have time in 27 seconds to address this. Mr. Freeman is welcome to contact me. Mr. Johnson-Reynolds is welcome to do so as well. Marin Organizing Committee is terrified to look at the correspondence I've acquired, but the city is not telling the truth about what's happened at that camp, and no one should be praising you or excusing that site.
We do have another hand.
Good evening. I'm Bill Carney. I'm president of Sustainable San Rafael, and I want to call your attention to a really excellent report from the Marin Grand Jury calling for electrification of Marin's buildings, both to reduce risks to public health and safety and to eliminate over a quarter of the greenhouse gas emissions in Marin that are contributing to increasingly deadly and costly climate change. In framing your required response to the Grand Jury, we urge you to commit to its recommendations, R1 and R2, to adopt a reach code requiring new buildings to be all-electric and incentivizing electrification when renovating existing buildings. The countywide model ordinance now being finalized by the county, San Rafael, and other jurisdictions enables you to implement these recommendations by the January 1st, 2023 target set by the Grand Jury. In addition, we urge your continued participation with towns and cities countywide to implement recommendation R3, to develop a comprehensive countywide building electrification plan by January 1st, 2024, in order to achieve electrification of existing buildings as rapidly as feasible. The report includes a number of feasible strategies for meeting that challenge. All three recommendations align with your Climate Change Action Plan 2022 Priority Actions, your findings adopting the EIR for General Plan 2040, and the general plan itself, which calls for electrification of building systems and appliances in new buildings and those currently using natural gas. We're out of time on climate. The Supreme Court, a fossilized political party, and a single coal state senator have broken the federal government's ability to deal with this global crisis. We're looking to local government to step up to that. Thank you very much.
There's another hand.
Hi, I'm Cece Osborne, and I'm a senior in the Marin School of Environmental Leadership at Terlinda High School, as well as the leader of the Marin Sunrise Hub. My generation and I are very much concerned about the global climate crisis that we are faced with, and much of our future will be filled with making our current human activities more green. The use of natural gas in buildings produces a quarter of all greenhouse gas emissions, so creating better standards for buildings would make a huge difference in our endeavor to create a more sustainable present and future. In addition, the county is engaging all Marin jurisdictions to develop a model ordinance that all new buildings be all-electric, and I want the council and staff to be aware of and support staff participation in that effort. I'd also like to encourage the council to adopt that ordinance this fall with an effective date of January 1st, 2023. Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, and I'll give everyone a couple of moments.
Okay.
A reminder, if you're calling in, you can press star nine. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it to the city manager for city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. And council, I have two announcements tonight. I'd like to start with an announcement about the new 988 number, but I just wanted to provide a little indirectly related context first. At our last city council meeting, the council gave direction to staff on what we're calling an alternative response team. And what that is, is that when it put in place, it would respond to 911 calls where someone is in distress, but a police officer is not needed to respond to the call. It would be a supplement to the Marin County's current mobile crisis teams, which is countywide, but not dispatched through public safety. So we talked about that at great length at the last city council meeting. We will, based on the council's direction at the last city council meeting, will be issuing an RFP for a third-party provider for this alternative response team. One new thing that happened since the meeting earlier this month is that Chief Spiller was speaking at the last meeting about hopefully getting some AB 109 funds, and that looks like that will happen. $250,000 for the first year. We are seeking ongoing an allotment for each of three years, but we've been notified as kind of year one, and then we'll have time to go back and seek additional funds in future years. So again, I'm bringing this up kind of in context to the new 988 number that is now up and running. It's a new national suicide hotline, 988, which became operational nationwide on July 16th. So people experiencing a mental health emergency, such as suicidal thoughts, substance abuse or use, sorry, crisis, or any other emotionally distressing event, will be able to call during times of crisis. And operators are also available via text or online chat. And so instead of calling 911, 988 is the number to dial or text for urgent help in the time of a mental health or substance use crisis, or even witnessing a person to deal with a behavioral health challenge. There's the Federal Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration that envisions 988 as a first step towards a transformed national crisis care system. It's intended to be a universal entry point, so to make it really easy for people and easy to remember number of 988. There was a prior system that had the full 10-digit number, so this is intended to be a universal entry point to reach a trained crisis counselor regardless of the caller's location. In the county of Marin, behavioral health is largely handled through the county and the Health and Human Services Department and the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. And we often work on behavioral health issues with their director, Dr. J. Africa. And he had said that we hope by calling 988 and a behavioral health crisis becomes as second nature as calling 911 in a medical or safety emergency. The local provider, because there's a couple hundred providers nationally, is Buckaloo Programs. So the call will go to Buckaloo staff who have been trained to evaluate the emergency and use trained crisis counselors to provide appropriate intervention. And those that require an in-person response, which many will not and some will, will be directed to Marin County Department of Health and Human Services and the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, particularly the Mobile Crisis Unit. So the connection is, we haven't put together our alternative response team yet. We're working on that. We'll be working with a third-party provider. But when we do, it seems like that's a natural fit as well for these 988 calls because it's dispatched through our dispatcher in San Rafael, and our dispatch team here can determine if that's an appropriate role for the alternative response team or not. So we just wanted to get the word out about 988. And so it's not waiting for alternative response teams. That's separate and is in service now for people that want to take advantage or need to use that service. And then my second announcement is just that National Night Out is coming up. It's coming up on August 2nd from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. And I think a lot of people in San Rafael are already familiar with this event because it's been going on for a number of years. But it's an opportunity to gather in some public space with your neighbors, and we have public safety personnel, both police officers and firefighters, that come by and meet with the community. And it's just a great opportunity to meet with neighbors that maybe you haven't met before, people new to the area, and also just kind of socially speak with public safety departments at the same time. There's no speeches or things like that. It's more of a block party. Some neighborhoods have barbecues or youth activities or that sort of thing. So you've probably seen the signs emerging around the city advertising it. There is a registration form for neighborhoods that want to participate. So we'll contact those that have participated in the past, and oftentimes, they want to continue. But SRPD, which stands for San Rafael Police Department, srpd.org, to get the registration form. And registration to be a new neighborhood entering this is July 22nd, so it's coming up pretty soon. So I just wanted to note that. And then National Night Out itself is on August 2nd. So I just wanted to provide those two announcements. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Kate. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kim, and really appreciate the background on 988, being that it just started. I think we're all excited and looking forward to having this tool in our community. So thank you. Next, our council member reports, and we were talking earlier, and it's been very quiet. I think people are on vacation. So I just have two report outs. One is I attended the beginning of San Rafael's Housing Element Community Meeting. It's a Zoom meeting, and we're getting input on our housing element. And the next one is August 16th. You can find it by going to the city website and just putting in Housing Element, and it came right up. So thank you for community development, for putting that on. It was a good meeting. And the next item was I presented to the Marin Healthcare District Board about the gun buyback program that we did, that Chief Spiller and I helped to organize with DA Lori Fergoli and the sheriff's office because they were interested. The Marin Healthcare oversees Marin General Hospital, presented what we did, what the results were, and they voted to help fund future buybacks at $10,000 for the next three years. So it's nice that we'll be able to continue those programs. So I think those are it, right? Okay, so any public comment on either of the city manager's report or the one I just gave? Don't see anyone in the chambers. Anyone virtually like to comment on the council member or city manager report?
To comment on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, and if commenting by phone, you can press star nine. Each speaker will be muted after two minutes has elapsed. I do see a hand.
This is Ava Chrysanti, and I just want to add some context to the city manager's comments. What your city manager has always failed to note are the severe human rights violations ongoing at the SSA/interment camp. It's a majority Black and Latino internment camp. Underneath the freeway, it's composed of largely medically vulnerable people. And I know that if Reynolds Johnson and Mr. Freeman were in that camp, there would be lawsuits galore. I do want to point out that there was a very poorly constructed lawsuit that was dismissed by a judge last week. That was to be expected, but there are other suits coming through that are represented by actual attorneys, and the city has some pretty severe liability. I also want to point out that your city manager will probably never disclose how hard it is to get a straight answer about who has jurisdiction at that SSA. And that's some of the material that I was able to get through CPRA. Evan Barbier of Barbier Security, old money family in San Rafael, who's getting over $32,000 a month to provide just one security guard on station at that camp. He sent an email on November 10, 2021 stating that he was informed by the police department themselves that the property belongs to Caltrans, and thus SRPD does not have jurisdiction. Now, your city manager forced me, instead of just giving me a straight answer from the city attorney's office or the city manager, he forced me to go through this lengthy process of additional CPRAs. Finally, at the end of it, they said, "We do not respond to ad hoc questions from the public." That is an indication that something very wrong is going on in this city and at that camp.
I see no other hands raised. I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
I will close the public comment on the city manager and council member reports and turn to the consent calendar. Are there any items that you would like held? No, not seen any. I will open the public comment on the consent calendar, which is actually quite short, A through D. So anyone in the chambers like to address this on the consent calendar, items A through D? Not seen anyone. Is there anyone virtually who would like to comment on the consent agenda?
If you'd like to provide public comment, you can use the raise hand feature, and if you're calling in, you can press star nine. I see no hands at the moment, and I'll give everyone a moment. Here's a hand.
Thank you. I know that you have a designation on the consent for Galati to be a voting delegate for the 2022 League of California Cities Expo in Long Beach. I'd like to point out that it's very problematic to have anyone from San Rafael City Council representing Marin, given that you guys have been advised for over a year now that that internment camp under a freeway with no bathrooms, no showers, no electricity, no running water, where people have habitually become sicker because of the exhaust and because of the lack of sanitation. No one from the City of San Rafael City Council that has been championing that horrific site should be even attending the expo in Long Beach. You know, you've had a lot of time to make amends. A woman died at that camp on December 9th, and you made no upgrades to the site. And then you got, you know, San Rafael residents from Marin Organizing Committee refusing even to look at the documentation of police abuses at that camp, of human rights abuses at that camp. It's appalling. And neither your city manager nor your city attorney nor your city council have ever addressed the issue of why there was no proper health inspection by the county or by the state at a site where you were interning medically vulnerable elderly disabled people for over a year under a freeway with vastly insufficient sanitation. This is really a problem.
See no other hands raised, so we'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment on the consent agenda and request motion. I'll make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries 3-0. We are now getting to our first public hearing, the SB 9 Housing Development and Urban Lot Split Regulations. I will turn it over to staff. Yep, do the, yeah, there you go. Wait, tell it goes green. There you go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Kate, city council members. Jeff Ballantyne, Senior Planner with the city. Just get my presentation going here. Okay, so before you tonight is a draft ordinance to implement SB 9, and I did not share it.
Yeah, no, we've just sound up. Sometimes it looks up for you, but not for us. So let's look at it on the same page here.
There we go. Thanks. There we go.
Great, thank you.
So before you tonight is a draft ordinance to implement SB 9. In my presentation, I'll give you a brief overview summary of SB 9, of the mandated regulations within it, of areas where we have discretion and staff recommendations, as well as a couple of areas where we've changed recommendations since it's been brought to planning commission. So just a brief timeline, the two things I want to point out, SB 9 took effect last January, and the Planning Commission reviewed the draft ordinance and provided a recommendation of city council approval in May. And so what is SB 9? Just real briefly, it consists of two components. One is that a local jurisdiction shall ministerially approve SB 9 housing development, which is basically two housing units on a single-family residential parcel. And the second being, a city local jurisdiction must ministerially approve an urban lot split, which is a one-time subdivision of an existing single-family residential parcel into two parcels. And in reviewing these, the city can only implement what are called objective standards, so namely from our zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. However, such standards cannot preclude the construction of at least two units of at least 800 square feet on each lot. In terms of the qualifying criteria, so SB 9 only applies to single-family residential zone parcels. In addition, it has some other qualifying criteria to protect environmentally sensitive areas, areas where there have been renters, as well as historic properties and districts. And so within San Rafael, there are approximately 10,000 parcels that are either single-family residentially zoned or planned development districts that are for single-family residential use. And in terms of the requirements that are mandated by SB 9 for development, so have to allow at least 800 square feet per unit, have to allow at least, the maximum setback must be four foot from the rear inside property line. We cannot require any setbacks for replacement or We cannot require any setbacks for replacement or conversion of an existing structure. And for parking requirements, we can require one parking space per unit. However, if that site is within half mile of transit district or a major transit, we cannot require any parking. And so, this map shows you the sort of burnt orange buffer area, shows that all the parts of the city that are within half a mile transit, so it's most of the city. So, sites within this area would not be required to provide any parking for an SB 9 unit and that's a state requirement. And so, switching gears into the number of units. So, previous, prior to SB 9, somebody could have three units on a single-family lot. They could have the primary unit, an ADU, and a junior ADU. Now that SB 9 is in place, someone can have four units on a lot. And so, that includes two primary units and two ADUs. And that's where we're not utilizing an urban lot split. And then initially, when staff provided a recommendation to Planning Commission, we recommended that ADUs be allowed in conjunction with two primary units on each lot with a lot split. So, that would have been eight units on the original lot. However, after receiving community feedback and doing some of our own internal analysis, staff's revising that recommendation to have a total of two units on each new lot for a total of four units on that original lot. And staff believes that restricting the unit count will still allow for an optimal balance of encouraging infill while also respecting surrounding communities. And then also initially, staff recommendation to Planning Commission did not include a height limitation on SB 9 that went beyond the 30-foot maximum that's already required by the base zoning. And so, that's what this image on the left shows in the blue. Basically, as long as an SB 9 unit met the front setback and met the four-foot side and rear setback, it could go up to 30 feet in that area. However, after receiving community feedback and looking into it closer, staff's revising that recommendation so that for an SB 9 unit that does not comply with the base zoning setbacks, but still meets the four-foot setback, so that's what's shown in the pink here, that part of the site, the unit can only go up to 16 feet, which is consistent with ADU law, basically allows for one story. And then if the project complies with the base zoning, shown in blue, then it can go up to the 30-foot base zoning. So, that's staff's recommendation. And then in terms of floor area, so floor area would be restricted by existing development standards for lot coverage as well as for upper floor area. So, basically 20% to 40% lot coverage depending on the zoning district. And so, this will, staff believes this will sufficiently regulate the overall size of SB 9 developments, as well as their additional hillside requirements. And so, an example shown here in the image would be a 5,000-square-foot lot in R5 zoning district. Your lot coverage would be 2,000 square feet. Your upper store floor area would be limited to 1,500 square feet. So, that's existing standards that would regulate the building. And then moving on, so in terms of mandated standards for urban lot splits, so maximum two new parcels. Smaller parcels shall be not less than 40% of the lot area proposed for the subdivision, as well as each parcel must have a minimum size of 1,200 square feet. And some real basic recommended standards from staff to require easements for things like utilities and requiring that each parcel have access to, provide access to, or join the public right-of-way. And I just real briefly want to go through some prototypical elevations and site plans for what an SB 9 development could look like. These were prepared by Driling Toronas Architecture for the Association of Bariate Governments. So, the first one here is a two, sorry, is it attached duplex, two-story. You see here on the left, Unit 1 and Unit 2. And then two detached ADUs. So, this is allowed. And here is the front elevation and the side elevation with my exquisite drawing skills of the ADU. And here is an example of doing a lot split with a two-story, two-attached duplexes with a lot split running through the middle of the building. So, you see here, Unit 1A, Unit 2A, Unit 1B, Unit 2B. Looking at the front, looking at the side. And then lastly, two detached duplexes with a lot split running down the middle again, looking at the front, looking at the side. So, just to kind of get a sense of what these could look like. Quick note, this actually would not meet our setback requirements because this part does not meet the rear setback, but it goes taller than 16 feet. But still wanted to include it. And then a couple of things revision. So, there's a couple of areas where we just want to kind of clean up the language in terms of what was in the staff report packet. So, in the case when there's a single-family home with an ADU and a junior ADU, cleaning it up to make it clear that consistent with state law, somebody does a lot split on the new lot, they can still have two primary units and that's just mandated by state law. So, there's two sections in the code. It's, one's referenced here, 1416282. And the other section for urban lot splits is, I'm just going to, is 15.155.030A4C. So, just kind of a couple cleanup items. And then it says Title 16 instead of Title 14 for zoning in Section 2, so one last cleanup item. And then finally, we received three comment letters today, I believe today and yesterday. And I just want to mention regarding a point raised by Sustainable San Rafael. Staff wants to clarify that the SB 9 projects are not eligible for exceptions to standards in the hillside district, other than the natural state requirement when it precludes the construction of two 800-square-foot units. So, I think there was some confusion around that. So, that concludes my presentation and we're available for questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Vice Mayor, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Councilmember Hill?
Yep.
Yep, go ahead.
I have a few questions. So, can you elaborate on how many permits have been requested or granted for ADUs, JADUs in the last, you're right, it's not exactly what SB 9 is, but I just want to just get a sense of what those kinds of requests are looking like recently.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I sent the information to the city manager and I did not write that down. But we get, if you have it there, if you could share.
I do.
Oh, excellent.
Planning manager Leslie Mendez. Oh, I was just, planning manager Leslie Mendez.
Oh, yes. Apologies, Leslie Mendez, planning manager. Thank you.
So, it looks like the city was approving for ADUs kind of between 1 and 5 for a number of many years until the change in state law effective in January 1st, 2017. And then, so the three years that I have data here, which is 2018, 19, and 20, the city approved 2117 and then 22. And I think the total to date so far this year is 20. So, we will, we'll have the biggest year ever so far this year.
Got it. And then, just so we can walk the public through what that would look like on the other end of this. So, when we say by right, if say a property owner wants to come to the city and say, "Hey, I'd like to lot split," as long as they can meet the objective criteria set forth, they can proceed. Are there any design standards? I mean, I think it's all the standards that we currently have for design. We still have to go through DRB and other facets that we already have. No, I'm seeing.
No, so DRB would be a discretionary review. So, it would be subject to the objective design standards and it would be by right, as you say, which means it would be submitted as a building permit and we'd review it to make sure that it did meet all objective design and development standards. And then if it was a development, an SB 9 development, that I'm not sure if this was part of your question, that included an urban lot split, it would be limited to four units total. And that could be a combination of four primary units or two primary units with two ADUs. So, we can't say no ADUs, but we can limit it to four units total.
Got it. So, yeah, I think I took that away, that the maximum permutation allowed is four, depending on if formula matches. I saw a couple of letters received around, you know, if we do, you know, can we just do nothing and give ourselves as much time as possible? Can you step us through what would happen if we do nothing tonight?
Yes. So, if we do, if the city chooses not to adopt an ordinance, we are still subject to state law. What we don't have is then the ability to limit certain things. SB 9 law does allow the city certain levels of discretion. So, one of the ones that we're choosing is to limit the height to 16 feet areas outside of the district setbacks. So, if we do not approve a local ordinance, the height limit would be the underlying district height. With the ordinance, we do have the ability to limit the total unit count to four if there's an urban lot split and the housing development. If we do not pass an ordinance and someone could propose the four primary units and get four ADUs as well. There's also the discretionary ability to allow access to utilities if you do the urban lot split, which is, I guess we could, that is discretion that we are opting to recommend as part of the ordinance and that would not be required if we did not pass a local ordinance.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. Those are my questions.
Thank you. I don't have any additional questions, so thank you. We'll see if any come up from the public. So, don't go too far, Leslie. Thank you. Well, I mean, yeah. So, I will open the public comment on this item. Is there anyone in the chambers who'd like to give some input? Hi.
My comments are going to probably take more than two minutes, so can I submit?
Yep, so, once your two minutes starts, you get the full two minutes. But whatever you've written, absolutely, you can submit to the city clerk and that will be both on the public record as well as shared with the council after the meeting.
Good evening, everybody. I'll try to speak quickly. I agree that we need the accessory dwelling units. My concern is, my street is already terribly impacted by over-parking because there's over-renting on the adjoining apartment complex a block away. Paul Jensen said he would not actively enforce this, even though it's a violation of the density limits under Health and Safety Code 17922. And that exposes the city to a private Attorney General action, actually, for attorney states under CCP 1021.5. There are also people now showing up in cars, dropping somebody off and then presumably going back to their own neighborhood. So, the parking has become a blight situation at certain times. And I can only imagine that this will increase that. So, I think we need to preserve the character of our neighborhoods. And I've come up, and it's also a problem because street cleaning, the trucks go up and down the middle of the street. There's no curb vacancy for them to clean the streets. Same thing with Marin sanitary. This morning, the guy had to jump out and remove the cans because there's cars parked and he can't get to them. My proposal to mitigate this is we've got all this vacant space at night. Northgate is vacant, school lots are vacant. Why couldn't we explore paying these people, like Northgate, to allow people to park there at night from 8 o'clock till 8:00 in the morning and give the neighborhoods evening permit parking so that we preserve the character of the neighborhoods? Again, the accessory dwelling units are only going to make a bad situation worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
District committed to whom?
Yeah, to the city clerk. Thank you. Hello?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can raise it up, too.
Okay. I'm Richard Falk and I'm here representing myself, even though I'm a newly elected board member director to the Lock, Loma and Homeowners Association. But we haven't discussed what I've been researching with ADUs and SB 9 with them yet. So, this is just for me personally at this point. So, first of all, I want to thank both Jeff Ballantyne and Don Jepson. They've been very, very helpful for clarifying both with the ADUs and with SB 9. And I think, and I think their approach of going to a limit of four is, you know, a very good one and would support that. I think, is the presentation that was done today, is that going to be either on that you did? Is that going to be online or available?
Yeah, so go ahead, yeah, go ahead and ask your questions to us and then we'll be sure to ask them to the council, to the staff.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, so that's the question is, will the report that Jeff presented be available to the public? Because there's one part in there also that was said 1,200 square feet that I believe ADUs are restricted to 1,000. So, might have just been the example that was given. Finally, the last comment is, in my discussions with them, I just, it's kind of a tangential thing, but I would recommend that you consider upgrading the IT in the building department because some of the things that would have been helpful for coordination of the city with the homeowners association due to CCNR enforcement relative to city rules is limited because of their DOS system that they have and so on. So, and it's less efficient for them. So, just something to put on the backlog to consider. That's it for my comments at this point.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Butler. I live in the Canal neighborhood, also operate a business there. And I'm troubled by what I hear here this evening. I don't hear a city that is saying, "We are going to go above and beyond the spirit of SB 9." I hear a city that is saying, "We are going to limit and restrict and claw back on this as hard as we can." And California's housing problem is a humanitarian crisis. It's an embarrassment for me. I've lived in San Rafael for over 40 years. And when guests come visit me from other parts of the country every five, eight years, they tell me how much worse it is. I don't notice it, I've been here every day. But we have a humanitarian crisis on our hands. Forty years ago, when our city planners and our community development directors were sitting here taking care of business, did they envision a giant homeless camp under the freeway? Did they envision no parking in neighborhoods and with eight people living in a two-bedroom apartment? They didn't envision it, but their planning and their regulations created it. So, I want to see a city that is truly responsive to the humanitarian crisis that is throughout California. And you guys need to step up and do your part. I know you have a lot of wealthy homeowners living in 2,000-square-foot-plus houses. I looked at a man living in a Volkswagen bus down by Marin Lot this morning and said, "That guy would get by with 400-square-foot living space." But it doesn't sound like anybody really here wants to end California's 50-year war on housing. Sounds like a bunch of foot soldiers trying to exacerbate the problem. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. Aaron Burnett, Director of Policy and Civic Engagement at Canal Alliance. First, I wanted to actually thank the city council. We appreciate that you keep bringing to the forefront topics in the agenda that really focus on bringing more housing to Marin County and especially San Rafael, where we are. I agree with the sentiment of the prior speaker. We agree, Canal Alliance, like there is an urgency of developing more housing. It's specifically an issue in the canal. And with regard to SB 9, we actually are happy that San Rafael is taking the steps to codify it to make it easier for local homeowners and developers to know what to expect if they do put an application in. The only, I wouldn't call it an objection, but question is to the stepping down from eight units to four units. The initial proposal did have eight units and then after some, I don't believe it was public comment, it was brought down to four units. And with regard to maximum floor area, staff believes that existing development standards should adequately limit the overall size of development. So, I'm just curious why that same analysis wouldn't also be used for, you know, limiting the amount of units? Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seen anyone? Anyone virtually like to comment on this item?
Thank you. To comment on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, you'll need to press star nine. Once you've heard the notification, the host is inviting you to speak, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comment and they will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see hands. For the person who's called in, you'll need to press star six to unmute.
Good evening. This is Victoria DeWitt. I submitted a letter earlier and I'd like to comment about the natural state, which should not be the first development standard to be waived and should not be waived without the building official's determination after his review of the steepness of the slope and the soil stability rating for the site. Natural state is part of the hillside overlay, which was adopted to protect the public health and safety on hillside lots and is not an equivalent standard to building setbacks, second-story additions, and lot coverage, which serves to address access to natural life, natural light. life, natural light, ventilation, sound insulation, and privacy. My second point is to prepare a map that clearly identifies lots that are restricted from SB9 development, which includes several criteria, including wetlands, fire hazard zones, floods, and habitat for protected species. This map could be prepared similar to the map showing those properties close to public transit, and it would be available to the public, including interested applicants. I'd also like to comment on something Jeff Valentine mentioned, or Valentine mentioned about the exceptions to the hillside property development standards. On page 11 of the staff report, it clearly states that Section 1412040 would not apply to SB9 housing developments. So the hillside exceptions are not being applied. I don't know if I misunderstood its comment, but lastly, I was wondering where staff expects SB9 development most likely to occur, and how it will affect overall changes to development patterns in Centerfell. Thank you.
Hi, this is Arlen Benavides, speaking on behalf of the Board of Sustainable Centerfell. Sustainable Centerfell supports a proposed zoning code amendment to facilitate implementation of SB9 in Centerfell. We believe that opening more opportunities for more housing units in single-family districts is an opportunity to increase the amount and affordability of housing available in already developed portions of our communities, and we expect that these new regulations will result in small units that enable existing property owners to benefit from additional rental income and/or the proximity of relatives and potential caregivers. Lastly, apart from the importance of the city doing all it can to address the current crisis of affordable housing, I also want to elevate the recommendations by students at Laurel Dell Elementary School, included in Attachment 5 of the June 30th Agenda Packet. In the recommendations, they listed that affordable housing be situated near sites where there's public space, community connections, access to resources and opportunities to share resources, as well as welcoming features. I believe that affordable housing is not just an equity issue, but we also have to be thinking about the larger context systemically of how families of affordable housing need to be situated around resources that are accessible to them. Thank you.
We're ready for you, Gregory.
Hello, thank you. My name is Gregory Andrew, and I live in Centerfell Meadows. I would like to begin with one question I hope the council will direct staff to answer. What is going to happen to property taxes? And will they quadruple with the potential quadrupling of houses on single-family lots? I request that the item be tabled because the staff report lacks important information, and the public is not able to evaluate this proposal as presented in the staff report or tonight. First, the staff report does not describe what the acronym ADU is, or what it means, and yet ADUs appear to figure prominently. Nowhere in the staff report is ADU spelled out, and nowhere in the staff report or the draft ordinance is an ADU described, and it wasn't mentioned tonight. I still don't know what an ADU is. Second, regarding parking, the staff report does not describe what a high-quality transit corridor is. This is important because it says that parking shall not be required within a half mile of any high-quality transit corridor. Every paved street in Centerfell is a high-quality transit corridor, so it is not possible for the public to evaluate the implications of parking from this proposal. For these reasons, this item should be pulled and tabled since it does not provide the public with important information to allow for a fair and reasonable evaluation. To conclude, I ask that you not approve an ordinance at this time. SB9 does not require you to adopt an ordinance. The ramifications of SB9 to Centerfell neighborhoods are monumental, and I think you would have to agree. It is possible that SB9 may obliterate neighborhoods. Instead, redirect the draft ordinance as interim guidelines for implementing SB9, and allow a period of time, maybe two or three years, to see how it plays out. Easying into SB9 while still complying with the law will allow better information after there is an opportunity to experience how it affects Centerfell. Thank you very much, and I hope you will consider this approach.
Hi, this is Bill Carney again. As Arlen said, Sustainable Centerfell does support this amendment. However, we continue to recommend that the natural state standards of Centerfell's hillside districts not be identified as the first standards to be abandoned to accommodate SB9 units. The idea that standards protecting the natural environment are somehow less important than those addressing lot coverage, front setbacks, or second-floor area limitations doesn't conform with the high value that our community places on natural, on nature. We therefore recommend that the planning department be given the flexibility to determine which exceptions should be granted and in what order to allow a given development, to allow a given development, and that should be based on this specific site rather than imposing a prescribed set of priorities. That's easily accomplished, it's simply changing some language from "in the following order" to "language," I would say, "in the order determined by the planning department." Related to that is, I have some confusion about Section 1412, again, related to hillside ordinance. It seems to eliminate that ordinance entirely for SB9 units. I'm not sure if that was the intention, but I would request that to be clarified both now, tonight, by staff, but also in the ordinance itself. Again, could be easily done simply by saying that, that the section may apply unless it's preempted by a determination to permit a development or a lot split pursuant to this code, so you would still be fulfilling the obligation. Thanks for considering these simple but critical adjustments to preserve the natural.
Hello, this is Amy Leichover. I'm a resident in Centerfell. I'm here to support the comments that Victoria DeWitt and that Bill Carney just made regarding the natural state should not be the first standard to be waived. I beg you to change that either to the language that Bill suggested, that Sustainable Centerfell suggested, or simply to leave it up to the planning department with the understanding that our natural state is one of the things that draws most of the people and sustains the animals in our area, so please reconsider that. It's crucial. Thank you so much.
We're ready for you, Steve.
Yes, I would like to triple down on Bill and Victoria DeWitt's comments about natural state. Not a lot to add from what they mentioned, but I would like to raise the point that all of this idea of ADUs and splitting single-family lots into as many as four units is benefiting certainly the city, additional tax revenue, permit fees, so you folks stand great that it gained from this, as well as speculative real estate investors who will come in to demolish old buildings or see opportunity to quadruple whatever rental income they currently have. I think we all know that rental units in Centerfell are not exactly on the cheap side anyway, so this whole idea about affordable housing is just an absolute myth. Anybody that's putting up a new structure will get market rent, which is generally well beyond the means of somebody with a very low income. So the whole premise of what you're doing to accomplish this, I realize your hands are tied with the approval of SB9, but the whole program is basically a farce that you folks seem to be going along with in ignoring a lot of the legitimate comments from the public here. The idea of ministerial review gives you obviously the governmental authority to do as you wish, slap in the face of the public. Perhaps you're just fine with abusing that privilege. Most people will look upon that with very ill thoughts about what you're trying to accomplish here. So I would just, again, in closing, ask you to think twice about what you're doing, certainly on hillside developments where parking is critical. Eli Hill, who's on the panel tonight, knows quite well what Fremont Road looks like, and there is no parking up here as it is, and the fire department is already weighed in with me saying absolutely they would not support anything on this.
We're ready for you. Looks like you've been muted, but you will need to unmute your phone. And now press star six.
Yes, my name, my name is Steve Thompson. I live up on Fremont Road, a place that Eli Hill knows quite well. He is a resident of the neighborhood up on the hillside, so I think he has specific information.
Did you just provide public comment? Yeah.
I see no other hands raised at the moment. I'll give everyone a few seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment. We got some great input and questions. I'll quickly name the ones that I heard, and then if I missed any, my colleagues and staff can fill in. One question about having the staff report this evening online. If you could also speak to the stepping down from eight units to four, if there's development standards, then why would we need that step of going from eight to four? Ms. DeWitt had quite a few questions that followed up on the letter that we received. She actually had sent a letter. Others would like to know more about the natural state exemption. A question about having a map about development for SB9, and quite a few questions around hillside guidelines and that intersection with SB9. Finally, property tax. How does that affect property tax? And then someone requested definitions of an ADU and transit corridor definitions. So those are the ones that I have, and I'll just add, those are the questions, and when we get finished going through those, I know there was public comment about the city's actions having to do with housing. If we could also provide at the end of it, maybe just talk about some of the internal kind of process things we've done, as well as our Affordable Housing Fund. We always want to talk about the Affordable Housing Fund and what we've been doing here in Centerfell to support the production of housing because we want people to know about it, and I think that's relevant to tonight's topic. So with that, I will turn it to Jeff and Leslie and start going through it, and.
Yeah, sure. Maybe I can start, Leslie, and I can, we can trade off. So, yeah, the first comment I got was ADUs, parking concerns, narrow streets, sort of safety in the hillside. So in that regard, really, the city does not really have much in the way of discretion. What staff's recommending is the maximum extent to what we can require parking, which is one, parking space, when the site is not within half mile of a transit corridor. So we're doing what we can, we understand that concern, and we're doing what we can, but that's the most we can do under state law. Since I mentioned high transit corridor, that is defined as well as ADU. So ADU is listed and explicitly called accessory dwelling unit in page four, as well as in the definitions in the zoning ordinance. And then in terms of transit corridor, that's on page five. It references a very specific section in the government code where you can find the definition, I believe it's bus or.
I can actually read it if you have it up. A high-quality transit corridor means a quarter with fixed route bus service with service intervals no longer than 15 minutes during peak commute hours. So that is what high transit corridors.
And then moving on to the next one was, one of the questions was ADUs. Why are they showed as 1,200 square feet on the PowerPoint? So that was deliberate, and that is accurate. So when an ADU, so I guess to back up, so if somebody does a detached ADU on a lot with a single-family house, the maximum square foot is 1,000 square feet. However, when it's done on a lot that has two units or more, the city's ordinance allows it to go up to 1,200 square feet, so that would allow two units up to 1,200 square feet. So that's the city's current ordinance. The city could, if they wanted to, reduce that down to 800 square feet per unit, but our current ordinance allows 1,200 square feet per unit for ADUs. Let's see, let's go, maybe.
Yeah, if I can continue you on the ADU. If you do an urban lot split and allow two primary units, that must be, we have to allow 800 square feet. The ADUs are not limited by the development standards per ADU law, so you would be able to have the ADUs in addition to your two primary units. So that is, the ADUs do not fall under the development standards that the SB9 development does, either as a single lot or as part of the lot split, so they wouldn't be kind of constrained by underlying development standards. A map, potentially a map, there are several standards for which SB9 does not apply, and some of them are absolutes, as the commenter noted, and some are not absolutes. They are, if you're in this zone, you have to do certain things in order for it to apply. So the absolutes are prime farmland, wetlands, conservation lands, habitat for protected species, and lands under conservation easements. So the other zones, such as fire areas and hazardous waste sites and flood zones, you can still do an SB9 development as long as you do certain, usually, building and safety measures, you know, geotechnical reports, geotechnical foundations for the construction. And if we're ready, I can switch over to the natural state. First, which is the easy one, which is the section of the ordinance, is that the exceptions to the natural state standards do not apply to SB9 developments. Not the whole chapter, just the section of exceptions. The exceptions are actually the ones that let you have a waiver of the existing requirements of the hillside overlay. SB9 developments must be approved ministerially, so exceptions are not allowed for an SB9 development. So it is actually enforcing the hillside development standards that are objective. As to the list of priorities, that is for council's consideration. That was based on feedback we received that several jurisdictions are putting priorities of what should be waived first. The idea of putting natural state first as a waiver was not that it was least important, but that it could be the one that's most restrictive, and therefore, if you allow that one to be relaxed first, you wouldn't have to relax the next. It wasn't to say this is the least important, it was just, if you start at the most, the least restrictive, then you can maybe waive that, and you still haven't met your 800 square feet. So that was the rationale behind the order. Having an order was to have complete transparency. If you're proposing a project or you're a neighbor of a proposed project, you would be aware of kind of where the modifications would come from first. So that was the reasoning behind it, and it is up to council to decide if that is a sound recommendation. So I think we missed some of those questions. Did we get most of them?
The PowerPoint will be, the PowerPoints are placed on the website, correct?
The PowerPoint will be on the website, the city website, along with the development standards.
Two more. One of them was property taxes, so, yeah, I think it's pretty well-known, if you do improvements on your property, the county assessor will increase your property taxes. I wasn't quite sure where the commenter was going, that it would affect somebody's property taxes who wasn't doing additional development, because I don't think that would necessarily be the case. The others, Proposition 11, that affects how much property taxes can be increased each year.
Prop 13.
Oh, sorry, Prop 13. And then, Leslie, if you wanted to touch base on terms of the number of units? Oh, sorry.
Before we move off of that question, I think what I took from the question was, will we, would the city make a windfall? Would we be enriched with revenue based on a county assessment? I think was, I think the, what they were trying to get at.
That may be the case, but this is a state mandate for SB9, so if someone were to, you know, improve their property and their, you know, tax-based increase, it would, it would increase the tax revenue for sure. However, land use laws are not decided or, you know, passed with tax rates being a factor of consideration.
And sorry, just to tag on to that, the Turner Center at UC Berkeley did a, did a study statewide in terms of realistically how much development could occur with SB nine. And they did sort of a broad brush summary for most of the major cities, sort of looking at aerial imagery to sort of see how much of a lot could still be developed, how much could be split, and then also looking at economics and feasibility of, would it really make economic sense to develop additional units? And based on their analysis, they, they felt that it would be a very small fraction of lots that can use this, that actually will, based on those factors.
And I don't know if it was a public comment tonight or one that came before, but in terms of, this law has been in effect since January 1st, and we have not yet received one SB nine development application. So where I see this occurring is that if someone wants to develop a lot and they were going to develop it anyway, perhaps SB nine would be a more streamlined approach to getting, getting the housing unit they're looking for without going through the discretionary process. And to the one caller, something being approved ministerially means the city has no ability to deny the project if it doesn't meet certain standards. So it is, it is just taken out of our control as well as anyone else's control. It is, you meet the standards, it's a checkbox. Yes, 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 you're approved. There are no detriment findings or any other findings of, of improvement for them. And then finally, do you want to comment on the overall housing affordability?
Yes.
Thank you.
On your question about the city's supporting affordable housing, as you may recall, in earlier this year in February, the city council approved $2.5 million to fund several, several affordable housing projects that results, will result hopefully in 139 units. So your city council continues to support housing in that way. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Judice. Okay. Are there any other questions?
Did we adequately answer the question of why we went from eight to four? I just wanted to make sure we hit that one already. There was a question about why we went from, why reduced to four?
Yes, we did not answer that. So thank you for bringing that up. We did hear orally back from members of the, the community, and we discussed it internally with staff as well. And we felt that that was where the community felt more comfortable. And so we changed our original recommendation. Again, that was where we landed today, and it is, you know, up to your discretion of whether you wanted to pursue that recommendation.
Thank you. Additional questions? Yes, council member, have?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up. So on, so Leslie, if we, if we removed, and we did not adopt a hierarchy of development standards, let's say we did not list and prescribe to the planning department, we're going to do it in this order. If we just remove that and just said at discretion, the department could still consider, say even adopting their own guidelines as far as what would make sense. In other words, can we imagine scenarios where we, it would make sense to consider a different hierarchy?
For sure. And we could adopt guidelines. And the caller was right, it might be more site-specific to do it as it comes in. What we were hoping to avoid was sort of a application by application kind of conflict of, no, not this, not this, no, we don't want you to build at the front property line. We would rather this. So that is the reason we proposed kind of a hierarchy. So there is the benefit of, of kind of knowing what you get into, but there is the con of perhaps it doesn't give the site by site flexibility, as, as some of the commenters mentioned. So it could be excised from the ordinance for sure.
Right. And sorry, just to tag on to that, if we're, if we're trying to pick and choose which standards we want to implement on each project by project, we're, we're in effect utilizing discretion, which could run afoul of SB nine as well.
So what, what would be realized if we ran, ran afoul?
I would prefer to, a city, well, I don't, I don't think Mr. Epstein has been briefed on the Senate Bill nine as much.
I was conducting a permit search. May I have the question again, please?
Well, Neera, Neera's online.
Oh, Neera's, okay, great.
Hello, Mayor and City Council, Neera Doherty, on behalf of the City Attorney's Office. The enforcing agency for SB nine violations, actually the Attorney General's Office, unlike other housing laws, each CD doesn't actually enforce SB nine. And the AG's office does have a right of action against cities that adopt ordinances that are inconsistent with SB nine. So that is the risk of running afoul of the state statute.
Thank you, Neera. See, I love this hybrid format. So we get our answers. So I actually wanted to follow up on those questions, if you have other ones. But on this same topic, as SB nine is new for communities throughout the state of California, I thought I heard you say that other communities are looking at this order as coming forward for just the reasons that you talked about. So it's not, I don't want to say it's the best practices yet because it's still new, but I know planners talk to each other, especially when there's new regulation coming down from the state. So could you speak to that when you're talking to other jurisdictions about where they're landing on this?
So we didn't do a, Jeff did a little further analysis with other cities. I'm not sure if you got to the priorities section.
No, that was mainly focused on floor area, maximum height, ADUs, those higher level.
So yeah, so we know that other cities have proposed these, mainly from consulting with our city attorney, Neera. And I don't think many of the other jurisdictions have natural state. And so that is just a, tends to be a, that's not a universal development standard. So to answer your question, we, I, we did not explicitly look what the other city's order prioritization was, but they do and have adopted it.
Sorry, I did, I did review all of the Marin County jurisdictions that I could find there, there was, and I did not see any of them proposing this hierarchy of orders. So I don't, I'm not sure if this was even raised to their attention or why, why it was omitted.
Well, I know that other jurisdictions are still in the process. I mean, we're, we're all doing this at the same time. So to keep following up on the same question, then I can go back to you. So if we were to re, let me see, if we were to approve as given or change them, when would we want to review them to see that it's working the way that we want it to work? Because again, when we have a new program, and the way it looks on paper and the way it manifests is sometimes different, would that be a year that we would do it before we would want to revisit it or by a certain number of units? Like, I'm just trying to think, what would be that threshold when we'd say, is it working? Or do we not get it right the first time?
I would say, based on the number of applications we have not yet received, it would be most valuable if we did it based on a certain number of applications. Because right now, a certain timeframe may end up with no results.
Yeah.
Can you, see, manager, can you share those numbers again of the pre-2017 and then post 27? I think that was the date you cited.
Sure, but, but I was referring to ADUs specifically, not SB nine.
Right. No, no, I understand.
So yeah, so ADUs specifically are around 20 a year right now. Looks like we'll probably get more than that this year. And before the law changed, it was, count on one hand, between one and five in any given year.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Yeah, not a problem. What I was going to suggest is, we have our annual progress report that we provide your council on the progress that we're making on housing. My recommendation is that we could use that time to kind of give you an update on where we are with all of the housing legislation, including where we are with ADUs and the SB nine and anything else that's, may come our way. So that, that's my, that would be my recommendation is just to kind of on an annual basis, give you kind of an update on where we are.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you, Director. Sorry, I knew you had other questions. I just, we were talking about that one and.
No, that was, that was my.
Keep going forward on it. Okay.
That was my question. Yeah, I mean, I, can we get into comment?
Let me see. Additional questions, Vice Mayor?
Not yet, not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Well, go ahead and start with some comments then.
Yeah. So I would say, you know, I, as one of the callers indicated, I am a member of the hillside community. It is a very, it is a place that does, and has, has had the hillside overlay and natural state to protect some of the things that can happen there, specifically because of the gradation of the hillside, among other things. And so to the degree that we can, I, I am interested in making sure, sure that we can preserve that for the sake of safety of residents. I am going to continue to pursue requests for state legislature to do cleanup. The way that it's defined with the transit corridor, I think is, is incorrectly applied to this community. I know that we've already reached out to our state representatives to consider it. I'm, I'm hoping we can continue to, to make that request, because it is, I think will ultimately create a safety condition and realized if we continue to build in places where it's not going to make sense. I am very interested in having staff maybe repeat one more time. It's, it is coming from the last time we did the readout of what we believe is the opportunity for development in San Rafael with respect to our, our next arena cycle. My recollection is that we have a, a lot of opportunity for development inside of San Rafael that, that is taking advantage of what we've just written. Is that true that our modeling does take into account what SB nine would afford? I know that you had said earlier that really SB nine is not going to be some, is not predicted to be a massive expansion in development. It's really at the margins is what they're predicting.
That's correct. And honestly, I don't think anybody really fully knows. Yeah. And in terms of utilizing SB nine potential units, so units that have not yet been built towards arena numbers. So I think you can, you, it's difficult to use them towards the capacity. So in your housing element, you have to zone so much of the city to accommodate those units. So I think there is a way forward. I don't know the ins and outs, but I just know it's quite complicated in that you have to really kind of show viability, financial viability, fiscal viability for those units to occur. So it's, it's not just saying, we have 10,000 units. There could be four units and everyone, boom, we're done. It's, it's a bit more complicated than that.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Um, we're doing comments still, Chris?
Yes, yes. If you have any questions also.
I don't think I have any questions. I have a concern that we are, this provides some guardrail, guardrails in terms of our implementation for SB nine. And I want to make sure that we are not going so far that we're being too restrictive. It is, we did not pass a SB nine, the state passed SB nine. We are implementing SB nine for a reason, for affordable housing and our commitment for affordable housing. And I recognize that there's lots, everyone can come up with different reasons of why not to support affordable housing. And SB nine sort of opens that door. But I think we need to look at it for, you know, it is another tool in our toolbox. And, and as, as we've seen, we don't really know how many applications are going to be coming through. I don't think the floodgate's going to open. And if it does, then we need, maybe we really, we do need to relook at this, but I don't think we're going to see that. But let's see. I mean, I think we're starting out with something. And I really want to make sure, I was, when I, little story. When I attended the planning training session, I spent two hours in a session where it was for the whole state. Most of the comments were about how to avoid SB nine. And finally, somebody spoke up and from San Jose and said, wait a second, our job is to provide affordable housing. We have a crisis. And, and so I really do think that this is, this is something that should help us in the long term if we're following it. And I don't know when we could consider opportunities for eight units, or what would make it a feasible project for eight units. But as we go through this process, I'd like to, to consider that. Because maybe there are perfect properties that like, you're not limited to four. You could do eight. I just, I don't know where that would be or how it would work, but I, I don't think we should shut the door totally.
Thank you. And, and I don't think we are. I think Director Judice was clear that we would come back and have the conversation at the progress report. Thank you both for those comments. As I already said, with a new initiative from the state, what it looks like and how it manifests is a learning experience for us all. So I tend to lean on what the staff recommendation is in this case. I know you've talked to jurisdictions about some specifics and just you've heard in general about some of the other ones. And I agree that having the opportunity to revisit is important. What, what does it look like? So I would support keeping the election of standards as it is. I understand the reasoning that you have set forward, because it sounds frustrating to the applicant if you're continuing to go to the next one. Well, you couldn't do that, but you can do this one. And that, as you said, application after application, that sounds confusing. Often when we have new initiatives, it is confusing to the community, and staff figures out how to make it work. And I really want to thank people that gave input tonight. Housing is always a passionate topic. We heard from both, you don't do enough to, you're doing too much. And so, welcome to the housing conversation in San Rafael. I am proud that we have continued to do as much as we can in terms of process and systems to enable developers, because we don't build housing, but to come here and to have them reflect our community values. I think the eight units was really swinging the pendulum one way on something that we actually don't know what it's going to look like. So I appreciate staff hearing what was said at the Planning Commission, hearing the additional input, and coming back with this recommendation to the council. And I would support as it is written. And I think that's the only comments that I have. And I didn't hear any dissension from my colleagues about supporting as it's written, but now is the time to talk about it.
Could we consider the, not including the hierarchy of development standards in the ordinance itself, that the department can at their discretion indicate guideline for, for that hierarchy?
Director, or Jeff, do you want to speak to what that would look like? Because again, you know, we want to respect community input and we want to use our resources most wisely, our staff time.
Yeah. And actually, if Neera's still online, I wouldn't, if, if you want to hear sort of more of the legal answer.
No, we would, we want to work through this.
Okay. I don't, I know she had a deadline, so she might not be able to still join us.
You're coming on. I, I think one of the, we had a conversation about this earlier. And I think one of the concerns is just walking that line between actually having an objective path forward versus leaving it to the discretion of staff and then going into now a path where we're actually using discretion and not really providing a clear path for an applicant to understand what their, what the requirements will be. So that was kind of our hesitation for proposing, you know, anything different than what we had already proposed.
So if I understand you, it's, the way it's proposed provides absolute clarity to the community. With discretion, we're introducing gray area on a new initiative where people might be asking you to do something that is, might be hard to find, it'd be hard to be objective, I guess.
Exactly.
So maybe, maybe for the, yeah, for the sake of folks that were suggesting that we remove the, the hierarchy. So let's say that natural state, even if it were made last, it would still be addressed in, in that, in the sequence. Isn't that right?
Yes, it would. Like regardless of where it fell in, in line, it would still be something that we would consider. The way we have, you know, as, as is proposed, the way it's written would provide the more extreme case first. So, so if, if an application, and I may have Leslie come in and explain this because she's really good at this, but if an application came forward with a request and it didn't meet natural state, it could still meet lot coverage. Where if you did the opposite, I don't necessarily think that would be the case. So you're basically giving away two standards versus just the one. I think that was kind of the rationale, trying to find the path where you're limiting the number of standards you're giving away.
Got it. So I just want to make sure I'm reading it back correctly. So essentially, we're applying the most restrictive ones first, namely the, the natural state requirements would come first, and that would then guide to the most, I would say restrictive permutation of the lot split and ADU permutations.
Yes, I believe, yes. I believe I understand what you're saying. The more restrictive is first, and then proceeding beyond that you.
Well, it seemed like there was some public comment, there was confusion that because it was listed first, first showed a, that it was not a priority. And Jeff, you very clearly said that's actually not what this hierarchy is about.
Right. It basically states which standard could be not complied with first, which, which in this case would, would be the natural state. I, I, not to, there is a slight nuance. Natural state and lot coverage can sort of defer. So lot coverage varies between 20% to 40%, depending on the zoning district. Natural state is you add 25% to the lot slope. And so by definition, all of these lots in the hillside are typically at least 25% lot slope. So generally, your natural state is at least 50% if not more. So there are actually some cases where maybe natural state is more than lot coverage or other cases where lot coverage would be more, sorry, more than the natural state. Because they're, they're doing two different things, right? Lot coverage is saying, what percentage you can develop on, natural state's what percentage you can't develop on. So it's, yeah.
And I think that's why I'm, I'm trying to, I, I know we want to keep it as objective as possible. So maybe I'm not saying let's leave it completely open, but I think that there are certain situations where it would make sense to be conditional. I don't know, maybe.
I had a thought, because as Jeff mentioned, they're kind of opposing forces. And natural state's only applicable in hillside lots or those with, with a certain slope. You could, we could recommend language that natural state or lot coverage, well, natural state where applicable or lot coverage, whichever is more restrictive for the lot. Because in some places, you're right, it might be the lot coverage that is more restrictive and that should be. I, I did have a hillside and it's natural state, natural state, that's like such a restrictive thing. But you're, you're right, it does, that's not universal. So that could be added language, the more restrictive of those two.
Yeah, and I, I do think having clarity here, I, I'm not comfortable with adding the discretion at the staff level. I think we're opening a Pandora's box on something new. I think that's an excellent suggestion. Thank you, Leslie. So unless there's.
Yeah, so I think is there, would we, so I would like to make a motion that includes the language just suggested around the most restrictive of those two, lot coverage and natural state.
Okay, city attorney, he says that and then reads the rest of the action, is that sufficient?
I was just looking up quorum requirements. So again, I'm sorry for having my attention directed away. Could I repeat it, please?
Right, so the planning director suggested, I want to say word sniffing, but it was way more, it was way more important than that. Changing the natural state or lot coverage, whichever is most restrictive in terms of the order of election development standards. With that change in the verbiage, is it enough just for us to say this to the community development to make that change? And then go ahead and, and pass?
Sure, I mean, we're introducing the ordinance tonight. That change will be reflected when the ordinance is returned for adoption. And the council will be able to confirm at that time that its instruction has been reflected as it intends tonight.
Thank you.
And, and sorry, can we add the, the two cleanup items that were on the PowerPoint as well?
Thank you. Is that part of your motion as well, Councilmember Hill?
Yes, should I go ahead and make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we, let's see, what says pass to print? We're not passing to print tonight, are we?
That's the.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Nomenclature that San Rafael uses, but it's, we're introducing the ordinance tonight.
I move that we pass to print an ordinance of the city of San Rafael, amending Title 14 zoning ordinance and Title 15 subdivisions of the San Rafael municipal code related to regulations to implement provisions of SB nine with modifications presented by Jeff Ballantyne in the presentation period, as well as language provided by Leslie Mendez with respect to modifying the hierarchy of development standards such that we will opt to the more restrictive of lot coverage and natural state at the front.
Excellent. I'll second. Second, moved in second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries three zero. Thank you all. We look forward to the progress report and seeing how this is affecting development in our community. So thank you. The next item is a leaf blower ordinance, which we discussed and had a presentation at our last meeting. So this is coming forward. I think Walter Gonzalez is going to join us.
As Walter gets set up, I'll just announce that he brought reinforcements with him today. He's got Code Enforcement Manager Ana Santiago is here. And the new senior management analyst in the city manager's office, Bernadette Sullivan, has been assisting Walter on this, this project as well.
Welcome.
Hello, hi. We're going to start again, thank you so much for having me today. And we're going to just go ahead and go over this brief presentation since we already saw it in our last council meeting. Again, this is regarding leaf blower ordinance and placing restrictions on leaf blower usage in the city of San Rafael. Background, at the moment, the ordinance, the general noise ordinance is what governs our residential equipment use, which limits hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday to Friday, and Saturday, Sunday and holidays, night to six. And our 2030 climate action plan encourages the use of landscape equipment in order to push forward climate. Thank you. So in a, the state recently passed AB 1346, which will eventually ban the sale of any engines produced on or gas engines produced on or after January 1st, 2024. And the state board is also identifying funds to aid small businesses in the transition. This is a good summary of the leaf blower ordinances and regulations across the county of Marin. Staff did do community outreach to, in order to inform this ordinance, we reached out to registered landscaping gardening business twice, once via email, once via mail, as well as publicized recommendations on the city website and requested feedback from residents. Some quick stats, the online survey that went to the registered landscaping and gardening businesses found that 75% of them already owned an electric leaf blower, 70% of businesses. In order to help us set up the hours of operation, we also requested some information on when they start and end operating leaf blowers. And 70% stated that they started operating leaf blowers at 8:00 AM and 95% that stopped before or after 5:00 PM. Our mailer had a little bit of less response, but we still received some information that respondents did request some type of financial support to change to electric equipment. And 66% of the businesses work in multiple jurisdictions in Marin, meaning that they work at one jurisdiction, well, very likely that already has a gas ban. So they should have some form of electric equipment at this point. And we already, we also found that 66% of these businesses already have an electric leaf blower. Our residential outreach found that most of our respondents, 93% supported a ban. 46% wanted us to start the ban sooner since previous recommendation was to start the ban in January 2024. And then some respondents, 23%, requested a later starting time for leaf blowers at residential properties. This is a very short, very quick cost analysis of the differences between gas powered and electric powered leaf blowers. Prices tend to be very comparable. The big difference is again, power. If you can see, like, I can, I'm comparing one leaf blower that blows up to 166 miles per hour. And the electric one has a little bit of a less power, but they're still very comparable in the sense of like what the job that they can do. And then for the more, I guess, commercial type of leaf blowers, we do see some difference in price. Electric leaf blowers are a bit cheaper, but again, you can see that there is a slight, actually, there is a difference in the like speeds of air that can be blown out of the gas versus the electric leaf blowers. And then the proposed policy changes, as reviewed last city council meeting, would change the hours of operation from residential from eight to five PM, Monday through Friday. And weekends and city holidays would be 10 to 4:00 PM. Non-residential, we'd see a change in hours from 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM. And then on weekends and city holidays from eight to five PM. In addition, we would have in a debris clause that would make it unlawful for any person to deposit dirt, dust, leaves or any type of waste directly to another neighbor in property, the streets, gutters or other storm drains. And the last point would be to ban the operation of gas powered leaf blowers effective October 1st, 2022. The enforcement mechanism for this ordinance would follow a general code enforcement protocol, which would be enforcement of this is going to be complaint based. So residents who want to file a complaint can file through an online form or call our code enforcement line. Our enforcement will be a phase in approach. So the city will not place fines based on new ordinance till January 1st, 2023. Instead, the property owners will receive warning letters. Starting January 2023, the city will begin to fine homeowners that are not compliant. Fines would be levied as a warning for the first offense. The second warning shall come in in a form of administrative fine. And violation fines will be primarily placed on the homeowner. However, as the ordinance is written, it does allow us the flexibility to go after businesses if necessary. And our staff recommendation is to pass to print an ordinance of the city of San Rafael, adding chapter 8.40 regulation of small off-road engines to the San Rafael municipal code related to regulating the operation of leaf blowers. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. And I know there in the staff report, there was additional information about the potential of financial assistance or rebate program. Could you just speak to that?
Of course. So after council direction, the city is at the moment considering a rebate program. That would be a one-time expenditure that would not exceed $10,000. So that would be the max amount of money available. It would be a one-time rebate of $125 per business. The rebate would be available to gardening and landscaping businesses with an eligible business license. And the funds would be given off at a first come, first served basis. And the program will run out once funds are run out or after three months' time. And staff will continue to develop the parameters of this rebate program. And given the amounts, this is within the city manager's existing programmatic authority. So we could put, push forward this rebate program without further city action.
City council action. City manager.
Mayor Kate, I would just add to that, that the ordinance tonight is really about the hours of operation for leaf blowers and the banning the gas powered leaf blowers, which is the main thing. There was a lot of clarity on those two things at the last city council meeting, but a little less clarity on the rebate program. So we just wanted to kind of separate those two things and say, what you're being asked to do tonight is, is adopt this ordinance about the hours and banning gas leaf blowers. If the council does continue to want to see a rebate program, then we would put it together along the lines of what Walter just said. If, if there is additional clarity on that item tonight, that would be helpful to staff. But because it's not part of this ordinance and it's something that could be done at the staff level, you know, a $10,000 program, we could put together all of the specifics and run the program should the council wishes to do so without having to come back with a resolution. But we, that is a point that we did want to clarify tonight, though, and just make sure that we got that right based on what you'd like to see around rebates going forward, if you'd like to have a program at all or not, or wait until we see what CARB is going to do first or that sort of thing.
No, that's very helpful because this way it enables us to continue to move this forward with a more aggressive timeline and wait to see, as you just said, what CARB and other opportunities might be coming through. So questions, Vice Mayor?
I was wondering, I think, I believe we spoke, or maybe I dreamt it, that we spoke about the communication plan. And I was wondering if there's any additional information around that. I don't, I can't remember who mentioned it was possibly using Marin sanitary communication network to spread the word.
Sure, so we do have a very draft community engagement planned. And at the moment, it mostly includes just, so one of our first things would be creating outreach materials, which will be flyers or mailers that our code enforcement team can hand distribute to people that they see as like potential violators who just getting the word out. But we're also planning on creating social media material, crafting with code enforcement and enforcement letter for the first offenses. So we will not be actively putting fines for the first three months, but they will still be getting these warning letters that will include education material as well as more like if, for example, CARB funds, where can we direct them to? And we would also be making a social media campaign with our usual accounts, which would be Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor and our city snapshot. I'm also planning on creating a leaf blower webpage that will live under sustainability, which will provide resources such as a CARB resources. Again, the flyers, if, for example, resident wants to communicate that to another resident, a direct link to the complaint form and a timeline of when the enforcement is starting out. And then I, I also explaining why we're really passing the ban. We're also planning on working with community organizations, Positican Alliance, the Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, school districts and homeowner associations. We do have a data set, a database where we have access to homeowner associations to, we can let committee members know that way as well. And possibly looking into sharing information with vendors that would sell leaf blowers to let them know ahead of time that this ban is happening within the city and not to recommend to be selling gas leaf blowers because they're not used in our city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, that was, that was my question. So thank you for asking it. And I think city manager Schutz, with respect to the design of the, the program, I know it was more ambiguous than you would probably like. Is, is a question around means test? And I want to ask this question also balancing the fact that this is, running a program like this is, is non-trivial. It does take time, staff time. And so if, with respect to considering a means test as part of that program, how much would you estimate that that would expand the program to consider that? When I did back the napkin math, out of $10,000, $125 grants that affords 80 grants administered against the number of businesses we have on a first come, first served basis, that covers a fair, a fair amount. Left up to, I think, most of us, I think I'd prefer to see a means test for businesses that are, that most need it. If businesses are doing very, very well and already have made those investments, and that's great. I don't know that it makes sense to be handing out $125 to businesses that, that don't need it. But how is it, how would, could a means test be done in a way that does not appreciably kind of tax the staff?
So we did, we did have, so in last council meeting, Mayor Kate wanted to have some type of hardship component. And we, the only, the only thing that we truly found that could be done, and this is again to council discretion because it would be a little bit of staff time, is going through tax, going through like the taxes, taxes, I guess, money made of the business in this, in a year and seeing how that works. But that is probably one of the ways that we can measure needs based as a, we did discuss, talked to other jurisdictions about the rebate program. And none of them really tried to do anything like that. They saw it more as the idea that we're passing this here, resources to whoever needs them. So if their ideas, their reasoning was more if someone's coming to request the funds and they probably need it.
Thanks, and Councilmember Hill, I wanted Walter to respond first because he's done a lot of research talking to other jurisdictions. I, I do think that there are other ways that we could be more restrictive. If you wanted to be more restrictive, such as try to target businesses that were smaller businesses, and maybe that's an indicator. Or we can, I think through the business license tax, looking at Nadine, see if, if we could save like businesses under a certain annual revenue or something like that. All of those things I think would be preferable than trying to get into tax documents or something like that. So we, if you, if the council directs us to do that tonight, we would put our heads together and design the program just to be implemented through my authority. And we would come up with something more like that to restrict it rather than something looking at like income tax returns or.
Totally, yeah. And just as a follow-up, I mean, this really does represent a bridge to where the state would come in. I know at this point, there's no date certain. So I think it would be great to have a, a program in place. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, so we'll open the public comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers would like to give input?
Hello, just a second. Turn me off. I'm here. So I have a couple of comments and then questions. I don't like how lax the enforcement's going to be. I really think you should start at them right off. Just one of them is they've had enough time to do, to adjust to this issue. I'm also very strongly against a rebate issue. These businesses are already opt elsewhere. And I just did a quick look, it doesn't cost very much for an electric leaf blower. And it won't, won't set them back very much at all. And you talk about a hardship, we're talking about hardship on people who have to listen to these machines and you have to deal with debris, which brings up the question of what, if the, if the ordinance is not allowing debris to be sprayed around and that's what leaf blowers do, what's, and something doesn't compute unless I miss something that where somebody spoke. what's, and something doesn't compute, unless I missed something that, where somebody spoke to that. And then also, what is the amount of these fines? What do they start at, and what do they go up to after the third citation, and so on and so forth?
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seen anyone? Is there any virtual comments on this item?
If you'd like to provide public comment by Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, and if calling in, you'll need to press star nine to raise your hand, and then you'll press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have two minutes to provide public comments, and we do have a couple of hands raised.
Hi, this is Anika Osborne, speaking on behalf of the Board of Sustainable San Rafael. We fully support banning gasoline-powered leaf blowers in San Rafael starting this October, both to reduce GHG emissions and to improve the air quality for workers and residents. We support the city providing an additional rebate for San Rafael landscape maintenance firms beyond that, which will be provided by the state to assist in the transition to electric equipment, perhaps limited to small landscape firms headquartered in San Rafael, benefiting local, low-income workers who suffer disproportionately from poor air quality and climate change impacts in general. Like other Marin jurisdictions, we suggest that you engage a third party to collect and dispose of the gas-powered equipment before this rebate is allocated. Additionally, since the state's program and the city's twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Climate Change Action Plan addresses not only leaf blowers but other small off-road engines, we urge the city to move forward now to ban all gas-powered gardening equipment as soon as possible. This would speed up GHG and other emissions reductions, and it would be more efficient to ban them all now, especially with state funding available soon and state restrictions starting in two thousand twenty-four for all small off-road engines. Finally, we'd like to note that leaves are a beneficial part of our ecosystem. We need to encourage property owners to rake leaves and place them in their green bins for composting rather than endlessly blowing these organics from one place to another. And it could be beneficial to partner with Marin sanitary to help communicate this message to residents along with messaging through other city channels. Thanks again for your forward-thinking sustainable, sustainability work.
Hi, am I on?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay. This is Esther Wunning of the Dominican neighborhood, and I'm very elated that this is moving ahead and want to thank Walter again for what I thought was his excellent report and excellent additions to it. I have no objection to delaying the fining. I think people need to catch on to what's going on. It's my feeling that this is something that has come to a turning point, and across the country, you're finding people realizing that having leaf blowers coming back week after week is not a sustainable solution to anything. So thank you. I think that will work out. The idea of education first, fines later, makes plenty of sense to me. The one thing I'd like to see reconsidered is the idea of having a day when people don't have any sort of machine engines running, that you can have a day you can count on as a day of quiet. I don't care whether it's Saturday or Sunday, but Sunday happens to be the day that most people, if they take off any day at all, it's likely to be Sunday, and most gardeners don't work on Sunday. So of course, the hardship for that falls on the weekend warrior who would have to organize his or her work around the other six days a week. But it would be such a joy to be able to go out and sit in one's garden or even have a tea party in one's garden and know that you weren't going to be disturbed by machinery. So I hope you'll consider that. I think the idea of some sort of even a small rebate is lovely. And one of the things that's been particularly nice in other communities, it gives.
I see no other hands raised at the moment. I'll give everyone a few seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment, and we did have quite a bit of public comment at the meeting we just had two weeks ago, and this was building on it, and again, really kind of separating the two issues so it can continue to move forward. And so a question that we had heard was around the fine amounts potential, and again, some of this I know is being developed, but we'll turn that over to you. And then what should people do with the debris so they're not just blowing it all over the place?
Thank you. So yes, the fines would look, so it would be, the first fine would be for two hundred and fifty dollars, second for three fifty, and the third fine would be for five hundred dollars. And in regards to the debris, no, it does not mean that people aren't allowed to like blow the leaves. It would be more like depositing them in public streets, neighboring property or storm drains. So it means that they're just leaving it in there and not taking care of them, so they just become kind of like a safety hazard, especially when they're like in the storm drains, that they're like actually covering the storm drains. Then we also had another quick comment, and I kind of want to answer to this one from Sustainable San Rafael regarding banning of all of gas-powered equipment. So we, staff began to look into the leaf blowers based on mayor and council direction. So we were to move forward with a comprehensive ban that includes all small gas-powered off-road engines. We would need to do a further analysis. So that is the direction that council would like us to take, then we're happy to come up with some type of report on that. But we still recommend that we move forward with the work we've done on the leaf blower tonight and then come back with that later. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. Any additional questions or comments? Do you have any questions first?
This might be a rehash, but I think it's important because it was raised, you know, can we, it was, you know, can we limit so that we have one day a week where we don't have any? And I think that there was discussion on which day, and that if we chose one day, that it would not honor Sabbath in a way that was equal. So I think we have restricted those hours to middle of the day mostly. So I think, I just want to make sure making that that public again.
Yeah, no, correct. We had a robust discussion about it two weeks ago when we had the full council, and we did not give the input to have one day of no leaf blowers. That's why that was not brought forward. Any questions? Are we ready for comments? Looks like we're ready for comments. Vice Mayor, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I, I think we have to do this. It's necessary to do this. There's no question that it's important for the environment. And I hope it's positive. I, I really hope we don't get into having to do an enforcement and have it be a negative situation. I think the communication needs to be like, we're doing a really good thing, and that the gas was what was used before. We didn't have otherwise. Now we have new tools and it's otherwise. And hopefully, we'll get to a discussion about the rebate program. I, I think we can leave it to the staff and the city management to work on a program about that, to facilitate and help people before we find people. So I'm absolutely in support of this. It's, and I'd love, as we go along, let's see how this works. And then let's talk about other, other equipment, because then we get into the whole conversation of what other equipment. So it definitely is a bigger discussion, so I think I want this to be really successful, and I want people to be really positive about it. So I, I hope we don't have to go down the enforcement route. I recognize it's there for a reason, but honey is going to be better than vinegar. As my grandmother's like.
Thank you, Rachel. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I would say this has intersection of a lot of different things that are very clear and present for our community. It has to do with sustainability and environment, has to do with economic vitality. And I've appreciated staff's very close attention to making sure that we're navigating our way to a great outcome. At least, that's the expectation. Appreciate all the public comment on this. I appreciate this is where we're going to go, and I'm happy to support the motion when the time comes.
Thank you. I also want to appreciate staff for all the work that you've done, Walter, Bernadette, thank you. I know you started working on it. Thank you so much. I really hope you won't need to be used for enforcement either. And I do believe that having a phased-in approach and having the warnings is a form of outreach. A two hundred and fifty dollar fine is more than a blower. And so to, to the Vice Mayor's point, to actually have the warning and to realize for less amount of money, you can go do the right thing, and that's really what you were talking about, about the messaging. So really support the phased-in approach. And to clarify, it's the homeowners that would be receiving the fines. And when we were talking about the rebate program, really looking just at the, the commercial part, and I agree. Thank you, staff, for coming forward with keeping the ordinance moving forward, and then having, whatever that would look like from the commercial standpoint will be at the discretion of the city manager and his team. And in the amounts that we talked about, the ten thousand dollars, we will, we will see. And, you know, the comment about the means testing, because we, we did have an additional conversation and thinking about it. A hundred and twenty-five dollars, it, the amount is a, I wouldn't say a huge amount if you're running a business, but it could be even more than that in staff time in a way, and I don't think people are going to be what's, we're taking advantage of the program. I'm assuming that ninety-nine percent of the people will be legitimate and in terms of their need, and if the one percent isn't, I mean, just to be totally frank, I, I really think when we think about our resources. So again, I'm excited to have this come forward to our community. We've been talking about it for a very, very long time. So there were no changes that were proposed, and with that, I would ask for a motion on this item.
I'll do the motion. Recommended action passed to print an ordinance of the city of San Rafael, adding, is that the right one? Yeah. Adding chapter eight point four zero to the San Rafael Municipal Code entitled Regulation of Small Off-Road Engines Related to Regulating Operation of Leaf Blowers.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
I moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries three zero. Thank you so much. Again, really appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
The next item was a tree ordinance, and if you look at the agenda, the item is being finalized and will be continued to a date uncertain this summer. So it has been removed from the agenda. For those who are interested in this, do subscribe to the snapshot because you always get a preview of what is coming up on our agenda. The final item is the San Rafael Successor Agency. Would my colleagues like to hold any item from the consent calendar? No, not seen any. I'll open the public comment on the consent calendar for the San Rafael Successor Agency. Anyone in the chambers would like to comment? Not a big crowd anymore. Anyone virtually like to comment on this item?
If you'd like to provide public comment, you can use the raise hand feature. I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment, and I would request a motion on this item.
I move that we accept the Successor Agency Quarterly Investment Report for the quarter ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-two.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Hill?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kurtz?
Aye.
Chair Kate?
Aye. That motion carries three zero and comes to the end of our agenda. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.